Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining the 20th Annual Citizens Water Advocacy Group Candidate Forum on Water Issues. This forum is for Yavapai County Board of Supervisors for District One, which is generally the Prescott area. I'm Gary Beverley, a member of the C WAG board. C WAG is a local nonprofit corporation established in 2002 and run by volunteers and the board. Our vision is that all residents of the Upper Verde River Basin and the Prescott Active Management Area have a sustainable supply of clean water that flows in the springs and streams, especially the Verde River are maintained, and the biodiversity of plant and animal communities is preserved. Our website, C WAG A Z dot org, that's C W A G A Z dot org, is full of information on local water issues. We really welcome the interest and support, especially the financial support of new members. Please visit our website, C WAG A Z dot org to become a member and donate. Now, C WAG is nonpartisan, but all water issues are inherently political. C WAG does not endorse candidates. The forum's purpose is to insert water issues into our political and electoral dialogue and to educate voters and candidates about water issues. So now that you'll be armed with this info, be sure to vote. This year, the theme of the forum is how the Board of Supervisors can help address the growing groundwater deficit and a declining Verde River. Although there is no immediate crisis to municipal water supplies, some county residents now are struggling with failing wells. However, there is a real long-term threat to our water supply, the Verde River, wildlife and recreation. These are all important components of our quality of life. Now, C WAG is science-based. A group of C WAG scientists worked for weeks to summarize the status of our water supply and create this basic facts document using data from the Arizona Department of Water Resources and the U.S. Geological Survey. Another C WAG group created the forum questions. Both the questions and the basic facts can be downloaded from our website, C WAG A Z dot org. All the candidates receive the questions and basic facts documents in advance. C WAG experts have met with some candidates upon their request to discuss the questions. So, a word to the audience. The forum is being recorded for later viewing on our website. It'll be up there this afternoon. If you do not want to appear in the recording, please turn off your video. Also, it's very important that you remain muted to avoid background noise. If we can stay on schedule, there will be 30 minutes or so at the end of the forum for audience questions. However, audience questions should focus on water issues. Please post your water-related questions using the chat function at the bottom of the Zoom screen. And a word to candidates, please keep your responses to one minute. We'll begin with a one-minute introduction by each candidate, then proceed to the prepared questions. And then finally, each candidate will present a one-minute closing statement. So, but before we meet the candidates, let's just take a minute to recognize the considerable personal commitment required for all of these folks to run for office and serve the public. So, we thank you all for your effort and to, to, to work for us. Let's begin with the candidate introductions. So, Mr. Compton, would you go first?
Certainly, I'd be happy to. First, I'd like to thank C WAG for putting on this Zoom forum. I certainly appreciate it. And as a C WAG member, it is important that all members of the community have an opportunity to view this and see what's happening. I have 59 years old. I'm a single parent with one son. We moved here about nine years ago. I spent most of my summers here in Prescott with my grandparents in the 60s, 70s and 80s. And so when my son was born, I decided I wanted to raise him in a rural lifestyle like I grew up with. And so we moved here. That rural lifestyle, believe it or not, was Nevada. And Clark County, where I'm from, where I'm from, there was less than 200,000 people in the entire county, less than there's here now. And we boom to 2.3 million. Water issues I've experienced and lived with my entire life. I've seen the mistakes. I've seen where we've had to get rid of wells. I've seen water planning, water districts, a multitude of water issues. And I'm certainly interested. And it is important for our controlled growth to maintain a safe yield and to be inclusive regionally when it comes to our water planning. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next, Mr. Mingarelli.
There we go. Well, good morning, everyone, and thanks for jumping on this forum today. Gary, thank you and your team for hosting us on important water issues here today. My name is Greg Mingarelli, and I've lived here 30 years in Prescott and have served in various capacities around the community. I was on the school board in 2015, served as the president in 2017, was elected mayor in 2017, and served in that capacity from 2018 through 2021. You know, water is one of the biggest issues that we face here in Yavapai County. And, and I think it's important to have these kinds of forums and conversations around water and water conservation and management. And I applaud C WAG for what you guys have done to make sure that this is a part of the conversation. I'm very proud of the fact, and Gary, you know, I pride myself in working with you and others from your group on the Granite Dells preservation during my time as mayor. Grateful that we were able to preserve 474 acres of the Dells and do that without spending taxpayer dollars to get that done. And I worked very hard as the mayor to continue to push forward with more conservation measures. I'm very proud of what the city of Prescott does as a result of my leadership during my time there. And grateful for this opportunity today and, and hope I don't go along. I kind of want to go along, so Gary has to stop me at one minute. He said he was going to do that, so.
Okay, you're there. Ms. Pernice, did I pronounce that correctly? You're muted.
Here we go. There was a little arrow that was kind of blocking my unmute button. So, yes, thank you very much. Also, I became familiar with C WAG when I was asked to help my community, Prescott Lakes, who were concerned about some development that they weren't not favoring of some large, high-density apartments in our neighborhood. And one of the issues was, was water. My background is that I worked for 20 years for a large municipality in Orange County, California, where I grew up. And not unlike Brooks, when I lived in Orange County, it was, it was almost semi-rural. All those hills on the, on the coast there in California, there were hardly any homes there on the coast. You could ride your horses down the hills to the beach and, and South Coast Plaza was a soybean field. So, I've seen a lot of over growth that was kind of outpaced our, our resources. And the result is they're still trying to untangle in California. I applaud C WAG and those who have volunteered to preserve the beautiful resources that we have here in Yavapai County that have drawn so many of us to this county to live here and thrive here. And that's why I decided to run. I got involved here in Prescott Lakes in the concerns that we had for development that was not keeping pace with the resources and infrastructure. And I'm very concerned about the, I had no idea that we had these water issues. At the city of Anaheim, where I worked for 20 years as a city attorney, I did represent our utility, which included the water utility. We had our own water and, and electrical utility. So I have some familiarity in working with.
Okay, please, please conclude your introduction. Are you done?
I'm also, I'm also a mother of two grown children and a grandson who was just born last week, and his name is Theodore. And I do believe it has some genesis in the Rough Riders here in this area when my children came to visit here last year.
Okay, great. Well, let's move into the questions now. So, many of these questions relate to some of the water-related goals in the Yavapai County Comprehensive Plan Update from 2032. So, the first topic is regional water planning. So on each of these topics, I have a short introduction. I'll read that the idea is to provide some context to the audience for these questions. Because you may not have seen the questions before, but the candidates have. So, regional water planning. Water users in the Upper Verde River watershed share a common water resource that is being steadily depleted by excessive pumping. The Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition was created in May 2007 as a regional water planning effort. But after 17 years with no significant accomplishment, it dissolved in 2023. The Board of Supervisors created a Water Advisory Committee in January 2005. Although the WAC successfully supported many important scientific studies on the Verde watershed, the supervisors terminated it in 2014. Ultimately, both of these early attempts at regional cooperation were unsuccessful. There has been no effective regional water resource planning for the last decade since 2014. The new comprehensive plan, however, suggests that the county collaborate on regional water management plans covering inside and outside the Prescott AMA. So, there's three questions in this topic. Question one is, do you, do you support Yavapai County working to improve water management in rural Arizona? And how would you achieve this? Mr. Mingarelli, please go first. So, I don't know. You're back. I think you froze for a second. Go, go ahead with the question. Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, I've got it here. You're fine. Let's see. Yeah, I think regional collaboration is important. You know, it's, it's important that we're working together and partnering together because we're talking about resources that span beyond municipality boundaries and those kinds of things. And so, what I would like to do here is kind of study why these previous attempts were not successful. And I'm not certain why, whether it was a lack of purpose or a lack of authority or whatever those things are. But I do think that collaborating, collaborating does make sense. We need to figure out how we can all work together for the same goal of conservation and stewardship of this vital resource.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Pernice, go ahead. You're muted again. So, candidates, you can remain unmuted if you wish, and that'll save a little time at the beginning.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Phrase. Okay, thank you. All right, so, how? I would definitely support collaborative regional planning. And I, Greg voiced my concern as well as why, why did they, why did they stop? What, why was this terminated in 2014? I would kind of want to know that before going forward with a blanket approval of collaborative planning efforts. But it doesn't make sense to me not to have long-range regional collaborative planning. It's certainly needed with more widespread distribution of information to the public. I believe that most of us want to be good stewards of our natural resources, and most of us would gladly comply with any conservation recommendations for these valuable resources that attracted us all here and keep us here.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Compton?
Regional cooperation, regional planning, and the ever-elusive regional management should be our goals. While the W A C did fail before, I, I understand others may want to look at why it failed. I think it's a better idea just to move forward. And I think that probably a lack of cohesive leadership amongst all the communities and just people not getting along was the problem. You know, there's a lot of successes that are important, such as, you know, and people that need to be included are C WAG. And most certainly, we need to shout out to the people who saved the Dells, which was the organization Save the Dells. They were imperative in this conversation. Without people such as them and groups such as that, Save the Dells wouldn't have happened. And it is important that those groups and others are brought into this conversation, the public, the communities, the largest community, obviously, is Prescott, and it needs to be regional, definitely needs to be regional. One cohesive plan for everybody, everybody in the same room. I would bring everybody into the same room. That would be my goal. So everybody can talk to each other face to face.
Okay, you kind of tackle some of the next questions, but we'll press on. What should be the goal of a regional water planning effort? For example, should it include both groundwater and hydrologically connected surface water? Should NGOs like C WAG, Save the Dells, the Nature Conservancy, et cetera, be included? And Ms. Pernice, you go first on this, this time.
Okay, so, yes, yes, and yes. Certainly, these, those, I've been a volunteer here in Yavapai County since I, since I moved here pretty much. And I was really, actually, what made me become a, me become a volunteer was I, I was just amazed at how wonderful the volunteers are here in this community, and I was inspired. And so definitely, we need to keep these volunteer groups who are focused on these issues in, in the loop and, and, and give them serious consideration. So, I'm trying to go back to what the question, so yes, and I, yes, we should include both groundwater and hydrologically connected surface water. And I think I already answered about the NGOs.
Yeah, you did. That's great. Thank you. Mr. Compton, you're next.
Well, yeah, I did answer some of those, but the goal of everything should be sustainable, safe yield. That's where we should be heading. And that regional planning, a regional cooperation is how you get to that. And once you get everybody in the same room and you start talking, that's the first thing. And I had already mentioned the NGOs and C WAG and Save the Dells that need to be involved. And groundwater and hydrologically connected surface water definitely needs to be included in all of the planning.
Okay, thanks. And then, Mr. Mingarelli?
Yeah, I mean, I think just continuing down these paths of making sure that we protect water resources and manage them well and, and better conservation efforts. There's, there's lots of different things that we could talk about in terms of what those goals would look like. Certainly, you want to look at surface water as well as groundwater when you're talking about water. We, we know that they're connected and, and both are, are vital. We, we see that with the Verde River and how it's connected to our aquifers here. So I think there's lots of different groups that, that would be considered for being a part of these efforts. And, and so I, I think it's important again, just to try to get everybody to work together for the same goals. Thank you.
It, it is important, and that was one of the problems with the WAC. It turned out to be very difficult to do that. So this is not an easy proposition. So, the third question here on this topic is, should the county prepare one water management plan for the entire county? Or should there be separate plans for West Yavapai County and the Verde Valley? Kind of the reason for this question is that, you know, Prescott is mainly a groundwater concern. The Verde Valley has both groundwater and surface water concerns. So they're really pretty different situations, yet we're all in one county and it's, we're all using the same water. So, should we do one water management plan for the whole county or separate plans? Mr. Compton?
There certainly needs to be one water management plan that is all-inclusive for all areas of the county. When it comes to water or any negotiations or anything we're going to be doing with the legislature, we are obviously a large county with a small population, and we need to speak with one voice. Being hydrologically connected, groundwater, surface water, and that we all use the same water, it is imperative that there is one plan. And when it comes to bringing everybody together, which is why the, you know, or lack of bringing everybody together, the previous W A C had issues with, it's just going to take leadership. And maybe we've finally come to that point where people recognize things. And for example, Coyote Springs Wells going dry, Williamson Valley Wells going dry. Maybe we're at that point that people will finally realize that we need to come together in that one room and get this problem solved.
Thank you. Mr. Mingarelli?
Yeah, certainly. Well, there's a lot of diversity, as you mentioned, Gary, across the county, particularly our side of the mountain versus the east side. And we've seen that there's not been success with some of these committees that you already talked about. I, I do think there's different needs and there's also similarities. But I would say, in order for success to happen, I'd like to start with just West Yavapai. Initially, it'd be nice to get some momentum, so some cohesiveness, and start there as a first step before stepping into countywide. I just, I would like to see our side of the mountain be successful before we move into moving to a countywide.
Okay, Ms. Pernice?
Yes, thank you. I would support countywide collaboration, but I disagree with Mr. Compton. I don't think a one-size-fits-all centralization is warranted. Without further information, I would need more to convince me that a centralized control is in the best interest of the county and all, all of these areas. Differing, differing needs dictate against a one-size-fits-all plan of centralized control. I am, I agree with Greg. I, I take the carrot versus the stick approach. I think if we could find some successful buy-in from some groups that we might obtain a better collaboration and then move to a more centralized management.
Okay, good. Let's move on to question two. Topic two is Yavapai County Water Resource Management. So Arizona state statutes grant numerous authorities that enable county to measure water, to manage water, including, for example, zoning, building codes, health and safety, flood control district for aquifer recharge, water reuse and recycling, regional wastewater recharge projects, and infrastructure improvement districts. These authorities clearly allow the county broad ability to improve water management. But previously, we have been told that the county has no authority to manage water. The new comprehensive plan recommends a county water advisory committee, a new, a new full-time employee planner focused on water management, a public process, a water conservation program, and coordination with flood control. So the question is, first question out of three is, do you support these plan recommendations? Would you support a new WAC? Would you support a new employee? Please explain, Mr. Mingarelli.
So, thank you for that. I, I do believe the county uses their building code to enforce some of the things going on with water conservation inside a home with the types of appliances or fixtures or whatnot in those homes, which is within their authority. We need some help from the state legislature on a lot of these issues that you mentioned here, Gary, to give the county more authority to be able to do these kinds of things, which I think are important. In terms of the WAC, again, just coming back to that, I would have to explore again why the WAC failed. What, what were the issues? What went wrong? Wouldn't want to repeat those kinds of mistakes. And so would like to also better understand what kind of authority the WAC would have been, you know, would be granted from the states. That group would know exactly what they could or could not do and enforce. Thank you.
Ms. Pernice?
Yes, thank you. I would need further information that supports the creating of yet another bureaucracy. Sometimes when a new agency is created, they often have a life of their own. And I'm not sure the fiscal dictates warrant the creation of a new government agency. Just because we even derive statutory a power from the state to create this, I'd want to look at the fiscal impacts and kind of weigh the benefits versus the negatives and, and go from there.
Okay, great. Mr. Compton?
It's a pretty simple question with direct answers. I mean, do you support the plan recommendations? Yes. Do you support a new WAC? W A C? Yes. Would you support a new employee? Yes.
Well, that was quick. Thank you. Does, if any of you, as we go through this, have additional comments, you want to react to someone else? We, we will have time to do that. So are there any additional comments at, at this point that you want to jump in?
I'm sorry, was the question about another employee? Was, was that part of the last question?
Yeah, it was, it was about, do you support the plan recommendations? And one of those recommendations was a dedicated water planner.
Okay, I would want to study what existing county employees qualify and what the fiscal impact of a new position would include.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so let's continue again with question two in this topic. What group should facilitate the regional water planning? Would it be a new district that has fiscal authority to do infrastructure? Would this be part of the county WAC, which is a water advisory committee to the Board of Supervisors? Is this something that Yavapai County Flood Control should take on? Or the Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association? I mean, are there others? How do we get there? How do we start this? Could you start, Ms. Pernice?
Sure. So, I would again want to see what existing resources we have within the county staff already. And, and I would start from there. Of course, yeah, we need to take a look at what kind of fiscal authority we have and what fiscal resources we have. I'm kind of always mindful of the bottom line because, of course, water is a very valuable resource. Hello? I hear somebody talking in the background.
Oh, it's my wife on the phone.
Okay, sorry.
Shared, shared office. Sorry about that.
Okay, so now we understand about regional planning, huh? Anyway, so of course, I, like I said, I'd want to take a look at what existing, existing fiscal warrants we have for this. And I'm kind of, I am kind of mindful of the bottom line. Naturally, water is going to be a priority, clean and available, available water. So that's going to be high on our list of fiscal expenditures. I would go from there.
Okay, Mr. Compton?
You know, we can start with the WAC, the W A C first. But as Yavapai County grows, that management area that I spoke of, that's the enforcement arm. Without an enforcement arm, nothing gets done. This is typical of counties when they grow. You have advisory committees such as the WAC, but then they generally flood it, you know, flow into, whether it's a new district with fiscal authority or it's in combination with a county flood control. There's certainly a lot of tools we can use, but in the end, it's going to take the political will from the Board of Supervisors to cede some of their power when it comes to forming a new district with fiscal authority. And that's a conversation for everybody to have, obviously, with every district. But we're growing, and we need to grow up like some other counties have, and we have to recognize that without water, nothing works.
Mr. Mingarelli? Mr. Mangarelli?
Yeah, I think, uh, it'd be good to work with the state legislatures and, and have them help us with this so that there was a viable and legitimate organization that had authority to do this kind of thing. I think it's easy to to make promises here today about, uh, what we may or may not be able to do, but in the end of the day, we got to make sure that we have the legislative authority from the state to be able to execute our plans. Uh, in terms of hiring an employee, I would be concerned about that, knowing the county is, uh, you know, been very tight on their budget and, uh, you know, we'd have to figure out if there was existing staff that could help with that. I don't envision being able to hire uh, a new employee given, uh, you know, the lack of resources at, in the county budget.
Okay, the third que-
Can I just insert that? I think where, you know, we could start out with advisory volunteers and NGOs and, and from there we would der- perhaps derive some authority and, um, a more, um, I guess fixed, um, a management group, water management group. Thank you.
Okay. And then the third question is, uh, how should the county support residents with failing wells? Uh, this refers to a map that was in the basic facts document that showed of failing wells in West Chino Valley, Williamson Valley and Coyote Springs, kind of on the edges of the Little Chino Aquifer. So there's wells failing there. Does the county have any responsibility or what can you do to help these people? So, um, Mr. Compton, could you tackle that first?
Certainly, um, if you look at the map that was provided, it's, it's pretty simple to see what's happening. And the number one thing I think we need to do right now is to slow the growth. If you slow the growth, for lack of a better way to put it, you sort of stop the bleeding, you stop the incre- you stop the wells going dry from a precipitous rate, we can slow it down a bit. Problem is, is we have so many developments that have been approved by previous administrations in the city and elsewhere. That to having even come online yet, we don't have the water for what we have now, and we don't have the water for what has been approved already. So slowing the growth is the most important thing we need to do. And then with the Water Advisory Committee, we can all move in and come up with a better solution to help those residents in those other areas, whether it's hauling water or whatever needs to be done, because we obviously are not going to sit there and let our our neighbors not have any water. We need to do whatever we can cooperatively to solve the issue.
Uh, Mr. Mangarelli?
Yeah, certainly, we don't want to see, uh, people's wells drying up and, and yet, uh, I don't think the government has a place in picking winners and losers. And I just don't have any idea how you'd get started, uh, you know, subsidizing or helping folks uh, with those kinds of issues, at least from a governmental level. There could be uh, other organizations that come together and do fundraising and and, you know, have some way to provide grants for people whose wells have gone dry, but certainly not from the government level. I wouldn't want to be trying to pick winners and losers, and I don't think the county has the resources to do that.
Ms. Pernice?
Well, I, I con- I concur with, uh, both, uh, Compton and, uh, Mangarelli in some of these things. I think that we have to make, uh, new buyers or new residents or whatever aware of these, these issues. And I do believe the government can have a very key role in providing proper information. So that when these people go and buy a home that has a, a well, they need to be aware of, you know, how many straws are kind of tapping into that well. And, uh, yeah, we, we, we can't, and, and that should be the obligation of the developer, the contractor, or whoever is is, is doing the building and, and also the owner who's doing the selling. They need to, I think there should be proper disclosure of these water issues, because that, that could s- slow down the development without the government having to do it, uh, directly.
Okay, good. Well, we can move on to the next topic, which is water conservation. But first, I just wanted to recognize that there are a number of, uh, public officials here attending this. Craig Brown is online. He's the supervisor for District Four. Mayor Phil Good is online, and I think I saw Councilman Brendan Montoya sign in. So, uh, we always appreciate their attention on these things. So topic three, water conservation. Unlike the city of Prescott, Yavapai County does not provide educational or incentive programs to reduce water use for homes with domestic wells and septic tanks. The only water conservation requirements in the county are within the Uniform Building Code. These are very basic and do not include a major consumptive use, which is groundwater applied to landscapes. So the question then would be, um, since the water goals in the comprehensive plan rely on suggestive terms such as request or encourage these lack action and enforcement, should the county require, instead of request or encourage, rigorous water conservation for new construction? And should it offer incentives for existing buildings that use small wells and septic tanks? Perhaps this could be done by supplementing the Uniform Building Code with a stricter county policy. So what conservation measures would you advocate? And, um, Mr. Mangarelli, you're up first for this one.
Yeah, thanks, Gary. Well, uh, you have to stay within your, uh, statutory limitations and what authority the county has, and I think they're doing that with their building code. Uh, currently, certainly the thing that, uh, could be done is a lot more education. I think the city of Prescott, for instance, does a great job with education. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm su- I'm sure that we could do a little better job at the county level with educating folks. Uh, I think once they understand, uh, the issues, and that's what Seawag's doing here, is making sure water's in the forefront of the conversation, uh, that, uh, then they can make better choices moving forward. But we have to stay within what state law allows us to do as an entity in the county.
Ms. Pernice?
Yes, I again, uh, prefer the carrot versus stick approach. Uh, certainly though, I mean, if, if it becomes urgent enough, we'd have to enact some stricter county, uh, codes and, uh, policies, but, um, I think most of us came here because we greatly value this beautiful natural, uh, resource here. And, uh, not just water, but I mean, just our entire beautiful natural environment here. And so I, I'd say that people are more inclined toward stewardship if they're properly educated. So I think we should be focusing on education and, uh, and I, the next question, I guess, addresses some of these issues as well, so I'll reserve that comment further.
Okay, Mr. Compton?
Well, the number one, uh, user of water obviously is irrigation. And, uh, uniform, uh, building codes do need to be updated for, uh, new construction. Um, most definitely for indigenous and drought tolerant plants that need to be included. The city of Prescott has led the way on this. They've done a great job, not that there isn't a room for improvement, uh, in terms of enforcement. But they've certainly done a great job. And would I support updating the Uniform Business Code, I mean, building codes? I most certainly would, and there needs to be, uh, in- enforcement to it. Uh, when it comes to incentives, you know, incentives worked, tiered water use programs worked. That's, that's available and needs to be thought about in the city. Um, excuse me, in the county, uh, where possible and if possible with some county island.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, uh, the third question is, uh, the comprehensive plan states that it should require new developments with golf courses or community parks to use only reclaimed wastewater for irrigation. Will you approve any new golf courses? Um, Ms. Pernice?
So, uh, you jumped to question number three, but I believe I didn't know that we were answering question number two. And, uh, so let me just-
Okay, you know what? I made a mistake. I can't even follow my own agenda. Okay, let's rewind that just a bit, sorry. Question two. Yeah, will you support new regulations for new development to use drought tolerant landscaping and irrigate with gray, gray water and or storm water, which is basically harvested rainwater? Please explain. So, um, Ms. Pernice, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Deborah, Deborah the Duffer, the golfer, uh, uh, yes, most definitely. I'm very accustomed to, um, playing golf in, uh, other, uh, outside of Arizona, uh, reclamation golf courses and, and that's been happening for a long time. I'm, I'm actually shocked that we don't have more of that here. I joined, uh, one of the reasons I moved to Prescott Lakes is because it was a golf community and, and I was hoping to play more golf and, uh, and if we're not, we should be using re- reclaimed reclaimed water. Uh, so my answer to that number que- number two question was yes, 100%. Tell me why we would not.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Compton?
Uh, for question two, yes, I believe I sort of answered that and the answer to the question number one, uh, but most certainly in terms of drought tolerant landscaping and, uh, for the county employees to understand what a drought tolerant plant actually is. Uh, to educate them so they know what to look for.
Okay, Mr. Mangarelli?
Yeah, so you're suggesting new regulations for new development in unincorporated Yavapai County? Gary, is that what you're asking there, number two?
That's correct.
Well, uh, ADWR regulates, uh, wells and unincorporated Yavapai County. Uh, the county does not have the authority to implement those kinds of regulations in unincorporated county uh, properties at this point. Now, uh, when there's a P A D that comes forward, there can be uh, a little bit more leverage for the county to impose those kinds of things or make suggestions, but uh, it's my understanding that the county doesn't have the authority, uh, to implement those kinds of regulations.
Okay, well, ADWR only regulates inside the AMA all and, yeah, in- including unincorporated areas inside the AMA. Outside the AMA, ADWR has very little next to nothing to do with it. But, um, okay, um, now we can go to question three that I leapt to at the wrong time. Would you approve any new golf courses, just to be simple about it, Mr. Compton?
Uh, the answer to that question is no. All we have to do is look at Talking Rock out in the county. I believe that golf course was supposed to be watered with gray water. And that didn't turn out so well. Um, so there doesn't, definitely doesn't need to be any more golf courses when we have wells going dry and people in our communities need water.
Mr. Mangarelli?
Uh, yeah, in regard to golf courses, uh, I don't, I don't anticipate more golf courses. I hope there's not more golf courses. I don't, and, and look, golf courses should use reclaimed water anytime you have a golf course. Uh, that only makes sense. We see that widespread now, so, um, yeah, I wouldn't be supportive of, of golf courses at this point, given our water situation.
Ms. Pernice?
Well, exactly, uh, it wouldn't be on, high on my priority list. I, I, I love golf. I love people who play golf, but um, not at the expense of our, our, uh, water availability. Certainly, uh, again, reclaimed water should be used and, and it should be the only really, uh, uh, source of uh, irrigation for the, any golf course. So as far as any new golf courses, I mean, yeah, there's, I, I don't, though I think the market would dictate that in, in any event. But, uh, I, I didn't, it wouldn't be on my high priority list to approve any new golf courses, that's for sure.
Okay, just for the record, uh, Prescott has three golf courses, Antelope Hills, Hacihampa and Prescott Lakes. They all do use reclaimed water. Reclaimed water is very valuable. It has nearly the same value as fresh groundwater these days, so that's why I kind of flagged a question here is the underlying question is, is watering golf courses a useful and appropriate use of this valuable resource reclaimed water? Reclaimed water is not waste. And that's an idea, I think, that has, um, an idea from the past, you know, so. But good, let's proceed. We're doing well on scheduling. This is wonderful. You guys are doing great. And so topic four, make sure I'm in the right spot here. Topic four is on the Verdi River. So, uh, the base flow of the Verdi River is sharply declining every year. The result of a combination of groundwater pumping and increased temperatures associated with climate change. Declining flows have changed the aquatic habitat such that U S Forest Service scientists now suggest that the upper river is no longer prime native fish habitat. This is a significant loss to one of the best remaining native fish streams in Arizona, and I just want to add that Arizona had thirty-three native fish. Um, three are extinct, nineteen are on the endangered species list, and ten of them were in the Verdi. It was one of the best, the four best streams in the state. So the question is, what can the county do to sustain and restore water flow in the Verdi River? And Mr. Mangarelli, could you lead off on that, please?
Well, the Verdi River is a tremendous asset for us and I hate to see it continue to be declining. Uh, it's very important, uh, for our county, uh, we need to protect it. Uh, I would support a wild scenic river designation on the Verdi River, and I'm, I'm grateful that uh, the municipalities in the county as well has, uh, pledged their support to do that. Uh, and, uh, you know, a lot of this, Gary, has to do with, uh, drought as well. Uh, we've been in, we used to say twenty-year drought, now it's longer than that. I don't know if it's, you know, we're approaching twenty-five, thirty years of drought here, so.
It's actually twelve hundred years.
Twelve hundred, oh, okay.
It's pretty remarkable.
All right, I, I stand corrected, uh, but I appreciate-
Well, no, I'm sorry, it's the worst, it's the most extreme drought in the last twelve hundred years. It hasn't been going on for twelve hundred years.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see, okay. Uh, anyway, uh, thanks for your efforts on, on that, and, uh, I, I support that designation.
Okay, Ms. Pernice?
Yes, I believe that public education is paramount. We need to make sure that our community is aware of this valuable resource and, and and the fact that it, there is, uh, this decline. Many people come here and don't even realize that. As far as designation and yes, I mean, um, even in, um, the, the overpopulated Orange County, they had, have designated areas and, and, um, we we, we need to be very proactive in preserving this, this valuable resource in this beautiful area. No question about it. And I, we start with, uh, education.
Okay, and Mr. Compton?
Well, the, uh, Verdi River is obviously an extremely important asset to the county. And that's where comprehensive planning comes in, that I've spoken about many times. Countywide comprehensive planning, uh, and in terms of new developments to slow the, the new developments and slow pumping. So the river has a chance to catch up, so we have some time, uh, for the Water Advisory Committee and, and other avenues we may proceed forward with to work uh, in terms of one comprehensive plan for the entire area. Uh, and that's the best way forward is planning and education.
Okay, um, question two is just an opportunity for you to describe the importance and the value of the Verdi to you and your constituents. Um, and how could you communicate? How could you demonstrate that importance and value to, uh, constituents? So, um, Ms. Pernice, could you start?
Yes, um, I think we've already kind of, uh, already answered that question. We must be good stewards of our resource and most of us here, because we greatly, uh, value, want to preserve these areas and the, the resources. This, uh, area, we can start, I, like I said, with education, but also holding community events that generate, uh, better awareness and, um, foster this uh, value and stewardship. As far as development, um, of course, I mean, we have to, um, make sure that our development does not um, does not imp- impede our- does not impede our our resources here. That's, I mean, that's got to be the number one consideration in improving any further development. We can't have that drain and destruction of our resources that can't really be replaced.
Okay, Mr. Compton?
While the Verde River is not in District One, obviously whoever's elected this position, their vote counts in terms of protecting it. And what would I do in terms of people in that area understanding it's, you have to go out to all areas of the county, not just your district? And they need to understand that, you know, you're there to listen to their concerns as well. And as a prime example, this evening at 5:30, I'll be at Mortimer Farms, which is nowhere near my district for a candidate forum. And I encourage everybody to come out at 5:30 to Mortimer Farms and listen to us and let us start, listen to our candidate discussion. And that is a perfect example of how I would move forward, letting everybody know that I have concerns and that I will listen to all people regionally when it comes to making my decision.
Mr. Magrelli?
Yeah, well, I'd like to take this opportunity to applaud Craig Brown and the rest of the board and other groups that have advocated for Del Rio Springs State Park. I think it's a great asset up there at the headwaters of the Verde River. I think this is a great way to bring more attention to the Verde River. I think it also, you know, is a way to generate ecotourism, which I believe is very, very important to our region. And that's why I worked so hard to save 474 acres of the Dells, bringing Save the Dells to the table to negotiate with the developer to save that precious resource. So I think just the recreation piece of it, Gary, would be important to get people up there to better understand what the Verde River is.
Yeah, all too true. Okay, moving on to item five, which is managing demand in the Big Chino. Kind of the reason this is here, why are we concerned about managing demand in the Big Chino is that the Big Chino supplies over 80% of the base flow of the Verde River, the perennial water flow. So because Arizona Water Law has failed to protect water resources in rural Arizona, a local solution may be the only practical choice to protect the river and domestic wells in Paulden. Because Paulden and the Big Chino Valley are unincorporated, Yavapai County has an important responsibility and opportunity. Some possible county actions to protect both the Upper Verde River and domestic wells in Paulden would be to, one, develop stormwater recharge facilities in the Paulden area, two, implement aggressive water conservation programs using educational messages plus incentives to existing homeowners plus requirements for new construction. Three, prohibit using groundwater to irrigate new non-functional ornamental landscapes. So the question is, the county has existing authority to define zoning districts with enhanced conservation requirements. Cochise County did this in 2007. Should the county require a conservation zoning overlay with aggressive conservation requirements for areas where water management is especially critical, such as the Big Chino Valley? Would you support establishing a conservation zoning district for the Big Chino? Please explain. And Mr. Magrelli, you're first on this.
Oh, Brooks Compton. See, there's a sign in the back.
Can I hear you? No. Okay. So.
I don't know, but somebody else mentioned my name.
So. So go ahead, please, Brooks.
Mr. Magrelli, I believe he was going first, is that correct?
No, you are.
Okay, what I support is zoning overlay. The answer to that is, well, we have to have some type of zoning overlay. If we, if we don't have the water currently for what we have, then we need to have that zoning overlay. So in terms of, you know, new construction or whether it's incentives for to, for different plants to be planted or whether it's for education for others. But most certainly, we have to move in that direction.
Okay, Mr. Magrelli, you're next, please.
Yep. Thank you. So in terms of overlay district, I'd want to explore the unintended consequences of those folks that are current users in that zoning district, proposed zoning district. You know, it's important that we protect the rights of those folks that are within there. I think I also would be very concerned just with, there's a lot of great agriculture up there. We all enjoy the farmer's market and a lot of the produce comes from that area up there. And so I want to make sure that we protect those folks that are in these proposed zoning districts to make sure that they continue to operate and do what they have been doing. In terms of stormwater recharge, I think it's a great idea. We just have to figure out how to pay for it, but I think, you know, anything we can do to help recharge would be a good thing.
Great, Ms. Pernice?
Yes. In government and in politics, there is really no simple answer, but my answer to the first question is a definite yes. Would I support establishing a conservation zoning district for the Big Chino? Yes, I I think that's a very good idea. We can grandfather in existing users. And of course, existing agricultural use users, which is a definite necessity and a very valuable use. So what other ideas do I have for reducing current and future water demand in the Big Chino?
Well, that's that's next.
Okay, so the number one question is, so my answer to those questions is yes, and we can grandfather in existing existing uses and carve out exceptions as appropriate.
Great. And then the second question on this topic is, what other ideas do you have for reducing current and future water demand in the Big Chino? And we asked this, I mean, Seawag suggested three potential ideas, but we're not the sole owners of hot ideas on how to fix this problem. So this is an open invitation for you guys to contribute your, any ideas you might have. Mr. Magrelli, would you go first?
Yeah, well, again, I think I already stated, I want to make sure that whatever conservation measures we do in some sort of overlay, we were very cautious about unintended consequences for those users that are up there right now that support us with you know, produce and food from that area because it's just a tremendous asset to us to have locally grown produce and food available here to us. I don't, you know, I think the stormwater thing, like I said, is great. I just would would want to work with the state to see if there might be some funding that we could get from the state to be able to do that. I'm not sure the county would be able to pay for that, but certainly I would love to petition the state for help on that. There's certainly a water, a lot of water that runs through there during monsoon, certain times of the year, that'd be great to have recharging to ensure that we have a sustainable flow of the Verde River.
Thank you. Ms. Pernice?
I I kind of answered that question already a little bit, but I I take the carrot versus stick approach, proper education. And and potentially maybe some regulation there. I don't know. I'd have to kind of take a closer look. You know, proper education starts first. I hear in Prescott, we started advancing the cost of water use in in proportion to the use. So we we might have to take a look at that if it becomes enough of a crisis. But again, yeah, we definitely need to preserve our our current existing uses there through some kind of grandfather or grandmother, grand mothering in and preserve the agriculture that is so valuable and a wonderful asset to our community. Thank you.
Okay, and then Mr. Compton, do you have any new hot ideas?
Well, comprehensive planning regionally is the number one thing that we need to do. It is an educational issue. It has to do with educating the public because everybody is concerned when it comes to water. And you know, just look, for example, the education that was provided to the community by the group Save the Dells and how they brought the government at the time to the table, not the other way around. And how they promoted saving the Dells. And now look what we have. It's just at Glassford Hills Park and what a fabulous thing that is. And it's groups like that and groups like Seawag that can be part of that education and helping everyone in the community where there's people that have been here a long time or new people to the community about the importance of water, preserving it for ourselves and for our children and our grandchildren.
Okay, good. So that brings us to the final topic, which is water issues and priorities. And this is really just an opportunity for you to summarize your views on this. What are the major water management issues, in your opinion, that face the Verde Valley? And which ones are are being faced by Western Yavapai County? And an opportunity for you to describe any solutions that you expect. So what are the issues and what are the answers? And we can start with Ms. Pernice.
Well, I think we've really pretty much touched on all of the issues. And the the solutions that I believe are are paramount are number one, education. And then through education, encouraging preservation and stewardship. As far as creating another bureaucracy, I mean, we'd really take, we need to take a serious look at the the fiscal dictates of that and and collaborate perhaps even with our our legislature on where we can get perhaps some other funding to support this.
But what are the major issues? Can you, in your, in your view, that that the two portions of the county are going to be struggling with? What is the fundamental issues?
Well, we've, we've got a declining water, kind of a declining water table and a development that has kind of outpaced the the availability of water. So those are big issues.
Okay, Mr. Compton?
The major issues are and have been lack of leadership to bring everybody together in one room at one time to solve this issue, or at least getting going into the right, in the right direction. And then after we decide, you know, what direction we want to go in, you have to have the enforcement ability. We've had a lot of talk. We had a lot of good ideas. The WAC has done a lot of good, you know, a lot of good things came out of that. But there's never any enforcement or management ability. Whether that is, you know, through flood control districts or it's a new water district. However, we decide to move forward, there has to be a way to enforce the decisions that all of us in the county come up with.
But what are the major issues in the Verde Valley?
Oh, you mean the declining water flow from over pumping? And wells running running dry, that's the major issue. And that has to do with the comprehensive planning and bringing everybody together to solve the issue.
Okay, Mr. Magrelli?
Yeah, thank you, Gary. You know, I think wells going dry is, you know, pretty high on that list of issues that we're seeing, and I think you know, there's some things that groups could do to come together to help those people. I don't think the government can really do much to help them. They may be able to provide, you know, some educational resources in that case, but I think having a group that would raise funds to help these folks with their wells, re-drill or whatever it takes to get those deeper or in some cases that are older wells that have caved in and just need to be refurbished. So I think that's a major issue. We need to make sure that all people have access to clean water. I think the other issue that I see here is, of course, there's a lack of cooperational or regional planning is is an issue and I'd I'd like to see the state, you know, help us in in this issue, you know, they regulate water with ADWR as well as septic with ADEQ and unincorporated parts of the county. And I think it'd be good to have the state at the table, helping us with this issue. You know, they've done that in the past with the Groundwater Act and and creating ADWR. And it's it's time that we now focus more in regionally versus, you know, a statewide effort to give us more help and authority here locally to manage what we need to do for our local issues.
So you've mentioned the state involvement several times. I just wanted to point out that in October, Seawag will have a candidates forum for the legislative District One candidates. And the state issue is really important, and I think that the state has really failed to help northern Arizona. As a matter of fact, with Tom Buczkowski, the director of ADWR, made a presentation to Seawag. And we asked him what they could do to help. And basically the answer was we can't, you're on your own. And so we do need help from the state and that will be a topic of Seawag's forum in the fall, believe me. So we have a few minutes now for audience questions, and so I'm going to read the questions out of the chat. And so then you, whoever wants to respond first or can jump in, you don't have to respond if you don't want to. So this is more informal. So one question is the water group, I think they mean the Water Advisory Committee. The water group failed before because no enforcement was possible. The carrot has not worked. Why would it now? Some sticks needed. Do you agree? Who wants to comment on that?
I I'm happy to jump in and comment. That's the enforcement action that I've been speaking about or the management action that I've been speaking about. There are educational issues that we can bring forward that may be better educate people now since it's become more of a prevalent issue with wells running dry, the declining flow in the Upper Verde. Maybe people are more willing to listen now, but there definitely needs to be an enforcement arm. And obviously that enforcement and how it happens needs to be in conjunction with everybody in the same room at the same time and regionally thought out.
Any other comments?
Yes, I I agree. I mean, if the carrot, it doesn't work, then we may need to develop some stricter rules and 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 it's one thing to have rules, but then we also need the means to enforce them. And and how we do that is going to be very important. So I'm just not quick to jump in and start creating bureaucracies and and regulations that aren't necessary. Sometimes it does take urgency to to create them, but I'll need to be convinced of that.
Mr. Magrelli, do you have a comment?
Well, certainly, you know, enforcement is probably the direction that we need to go if people aren't educating themselves and then following through with their their own decisions to conserve and and better manage the water resource. We just have to have the authority to do it from the state.
You know, there's been a lot of studies on the relative effectiveness of education versus incentives versus requirements. And some of that has come out of water quality management in eastern, more humid regions of the country. Educational measures are have an effect, they, you know, the 10 or 15% effectiveness. But they're kind of expensive because you have to keep up with the messaging because people come in and people move out and people get used to your messages. And so it's hard to predict how much of an effect it's going to have, and it's a continuing expense. Incentives work well, and Prescott has a lot of experience with that and has evaluated the effectiveness of those programs. But every place it's been studied, the requirements are the most effective. And they're also, of course, the most controversial in a politically conservative county. So these are the struggles that we're going to have to discuss. Another question here is, in response to Mr. Magrelli saying the west side of the mountain should find a way to cooperate, before we proceed to countywide planning, my concern that is until the Big Chino pipeline issue is resolved, which could take years and years, we won't have true cooperation on this side of the mountain. We need to move forward with the county plan now. Question for the candidates, what's your position on the Big Chino pipeline? Who wants to step up first?
It's expensive and I don't know how we're going to pay for it. You know, it's a great resource to have access. You know, it's a great resource to have access to up there in the Big Chino. I'm concerned about what effect pumping that has, Gary, on the Verde River. I know that that's ongoing and and there's studies of wells being drilled to study that connection from the Big Chino to the Verde. But again, you know, just the cost of that thing, I, you know, every few years I hear the numbers just kind of keep growing. So I, I don't know when or how that's going to get accomplished.
Right, Prescott, Prescott just updated the cost on that and they were saying that the new cost was, they had a range of costs, but it was like in the $300 million zone, plus or minus. And that was without considering the mitigation. So, you know, the Seawag is also very concerned about the cost. But did you just want to jump in, Mr. Compton?
Yeah, I was just saying, i- it is the cost and where is the money going to come from and the effect of the pumping? And that's my understanding is that that's a 30-inch pipeline coming down. Is there no 30-inch, this in in that cost is a 30-inch return line? Going back up, is that in the budget? That's his. And so what that $300 million price or $500 million price is going to be, you know, a $750 million price. And the money just isn't there right now.
Ms. Pernice, what's your position on the Big Chino Pipeline?
Again, expense, I'm always with the fiscal bottom line and I'd want to I'd want some, a lot more information to convince me that these kinds of expenditures are more, are really warranted. We have to look at all the, all the factors.
And Gary, I, if I could, you know, I, I think the question is to us as county supervisor candidates, just to know what our opinion is of this. But, you know, we need to all keep in mind that it's Prescott and Prescott Valley that, you know, owns that water right and is the authority over that Big Chino water right. It's not a county, the county doesn't have authority over that water right in the Big Chino.
That's certainly understandable, but that's where it comes in when it comes to the regional cooperation or regional planning that I'm talking about. The Prescott and is the largest city and, you know, obviously Prescott Valley. The positive working relationships with those folks elected in those, in those vicinities is of utmost importance. And developing and maintaining the positive relationships, let's say, with Mayor Phil Good or Kathy Rusing or, excuse me, Councilwoman Kathy Rusing and others. That's how you get the job done. While they do have the rights to it, it is our responsibility as supervisors, i.e. the word supervisor, to supervise the entire area and be the leaders in this effort to bring everybody together.
Well, I, I agree. I mean, we can't be isolationist. What happens in Prescott affects every place else and vice versa. So that's true.
So I've just been reminded that I omitted recognizing that Councilwoman Kathy Rusing is also in attendance. So another question here is what role can the county play in conservation education?
Happy to jump in. That's that supervisor role that I was speaking of. The, the word supervisor has a meaning. You, regional cooperation and regional planning and bringing everybody together, that's the county's role. That's the role of the Board of Supervisors is to bring people together. It's not the Board of the All-Powerful Five. It is the board that should be bringing people together. And that's my goal if elected is to bring people together into the same room so we can get these issues solved.
Other comments?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question was, what role should the county play in conservation education?
Oh, so I think there should be, there should be incentives, including holding, perhaps even having events that make people more aware, for one thing.
This is actually kind of important. You know, most of the water users in unincorporated Yavapai County and, and most of the water users in the town of Chino Valley are on domestic wells and septic tanks. So their water use is not recharged, very small fraction, if any, of recharge comes from a septic tank. So that's, that's a place where we could make some savings. If we could reduce water use in those situations. So that's kind of the background behind that question.
You know, Gary, you, you talked about just the effectiveness of education and certainly doesn't mean we don't do education. Right now, the county does have a water smart education component as well as, you know, some, some things they do, educating children. And so I think that's important to, to look at. How can we expand that? You know, how can we make it more available? To, to take the things that the county is already doing, but just broaden it and make it more available to, to the public. Like you said earlier, it's just an ongoing. It's something you gotta just keep at all the time, educating folks about conservation and opportunities. And there, it's, there, there's more opportunities as technology advances as well. It's important that we make people aware of that.
We, we should be, we can, it's, it's like an online marketing program. And there's a ways for us to not only collaborate regionally, but also with existing businesses. And there could be economic incentives for that.
Sure, you know, for a long time Prescott was sending out little in-water conservation cards in the water bills. The county doesn't have a water company. It doesn't send out water bills. It's, the county faces a much more difficult problem with, with education than Prescott or Prescott Valley municipal water supplies do. So this is something that we're going to have to think out of the box and be clever about. I, I don't have the answer. Here's a question about the Hacienda River and the Senator Mine, which is an important issue, but it's not part of the water problems in the Prescott AMA and the Big Chino. So I'm not going to forward that. Well, here's someone that thanks you for participating. And do you have any ideas on what Seawag could do to be more effective in educating officials and citizens about our water? What could we do better?
Can you make it a requirement to be educated by you?
We can't do that.
I'm just joking, Gary.
Yeah, I know.
Any information, I just want to, again, thank you for putting all the information out there and helping to educate us as we run for office as candidates. It's, it's been, it's been a pleasure.
Well, I think having these Zoom meetings is really helpful because not, you know, a lot of people can't come all the way out here for, you know, for these, the Seawag meetings. And, and some people don't have the physical ability to do that. So any ways that you can make your, yourself accessible to the public all, all to the good? I think it's a wonderful group and, and I applaud all your volunteers and, and your group.
Thank you. Any suggestions, Mr. Mingerelli?
Well, I, you know, I don't see a lot of room for improvement here. People, you know, can't make it a requirement. As Brooks, I know, was kidding about, but we just, we have to, you know, figure out how, where, where are people communicating? And I'm certain you're on social media platforms and those kinds of things. It's very important to stay relevant in just where people are at. And I mean by where they're at in terms of communication. And, and, you know, people are scrolling on their phones all the time. And so Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, Snapchat. Do you know what Snapchat is, Gary? Have you ever snapped?
That is so last century.
Well, anyway, those, those platforms are important.
Okay, here's another question. Will you, it has to do with the Wild and Scenic River, and some of you talked about this. I just want to make the point that if, when we get Congress to designate the Upper Verde Wild and Scenic River, it really, the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act does not guarantee maintaining of flow in the river. So it really helps for recognition, name recognition, and it can help people appreciate the value of this. Basically, it says it's a national treasure, but it won't help keep water in the river. The question here is, will you personally lobby our congressional elected officials, Representative Crane to support a Wild and Scenic River, Representative Crane and our senators to support a Wild and Scenic River?
Very quick, yes.
Yeah, I think I earlier stated, Gary, my support of the Wild and Scenic River designation. I think it's important. Again, this is kind of an education piece like you're, you're saying, and it just brings, it elevates the river in terms of the ability to market it for recreational uses. And anytime you get people on the river, floating the river, fishing the river, hiking along the river, whatever it may be, then they have a greater appreciation of what that resource is and they're going to want to preserve it. So I applaud you and your team's effort to push that front. And I would certainly lobby Eli Crane and others for that designation.
Ms. Pernice?
Yes, I, I concur. I mean, any way that we can augment awareness of our valuable area here. And while the Scenic Rivers Act is certainly one way, and just the whole ecotourism is, I mean, that's what draws us here and it should also be a way of preserving what we have here.
Hey, thank you. So another question here states that A D W R is going to measure the Prescott AMA Aquifer by the end of the year. If they find, well, they measure it at the end of every year, actually, to accumulate data to see what's happening with the water levels. So if they find there's no longer 100-year water supply and dictate there should be known to development in the AMA, what would you do to augment existing supplies? I, I just want to point out that the A D W R did state that in the Penale AMA, there was no longer 100-year water supply. They were, I think, four million acre feet in the hole. And in the big development out in Buckeye, similar in the press, in the Phoenix AMA, a similar thing happened. They were eight million acre feet in the hole. So that has constrained development in those areas. So if, if that happened here, what would you do to augment existing supplies?
Well, again, I mean, how, how, we have to analyze, I guess, the, you know, the, the, the rate of diminishment versus the value of, of and severity of wanting to regulate this. I mean, are we going to be like the Chinese and, and say, well, you can't go on Snapchat unless you've conserved enough water this week? I mean, I'm being facetious, but, you know, it's, it's a careful measurement and, and, and an analysis. So I'm, I'm sort of the anti-regulatory because it just advances the cost of everything that is always seems to be the bottom line. But sometimes, sometimes things that are not replaceable, you know, you have to take drastic action, so.
Well, obviously, that's an extremely difficult issue for
Has to be measured.
For the county, but if that happens in the city, I'm, it most certainly just boils down to conservation and more education. And so people understand where we are. But I'm quite confident in the leadership we have at the city now can get that done.
Mr. Mingerelli?
Gary, when they monitor the the AMA and the Aquifer there, are they measuring just how much it's been reduced? Is there some quantification of what is the existing resource that's available?
Yeah, what they do is they'll measure the existing levels. So they have a trend on how water levels are changing. But the determination of 100-year water supply is done with a groundwater model. And, and it looks 100 years in the future. So that, that has, as I said, recently happened in in Penale County and in the western regions of the Phoenix AMA. So it's, there's no immediate crisis here for municipal water supplies. I, I mean, Seawag's not saying that we're going to run out of water tomorrow. This is a long-term problem.
Right. Yeah, you know, I think the city of Prescott, I know pretty intimately and then, and has done a good job with recharge. You know, new home construction. And again, this is in the city of Prescott. It's so, and I know we're on a county supervisor forum here. But just as an example, new development in Prescott, somewhere between 80 and 90%, I think you and I have had some differences, differences on this percentage, Gary. So please voice your, your opposition if you want. But I know there's a very high percentage, 80-plus percent of the water used in a home in the city of Prescott in newer development is returned to the Aquifer. I think that's tremendous. It's, it's a great example for us. Executing that in the county is just a lot more difficult. We don't have the authority to do it, number one. But number two, just because it's so rural and spread out, I'd love for two, new technology to be developed at some point where you could be using a well and, and instead of a septic, is there a way that we could formulate to use that wastewater in, on an individual, you know, basis, on an individual home to get that to recharge? You know, I, I don't know what that would look like, but I'd love to figure that out.
Well, putting rural homes on sewer would be one way of doing it. But that's just phenomenally expensive and it's likely not going to happen. Having rural homes collect gray water, that is water from laundry, showers, sinks, not toilets, not kitchen sink. That gray water can be used by state law to irrigate ornamental plants. So that would help. But the big solution that no one's brought up is, is stormwater collection and recharge. This has enormous potential. And it would require, though, a, a regional district with the authority to fund infrastructure. And it's not going to be cheap, but it's not going to be, neither is the Big Chino Pipeline. So there are things that could, that need to be evaluated as part of this comprehensive plan. We haven't focused on making specific suggestions. But that is one that is, what, what do you think about that? And you?
Well, I, I spoke about that earlier, Gary, when it comes to the comprehensive planning and regional planning, which would be, you know, a new water district. Exactly what you're talking about with taxing authority or enforcement, enforcement authority as a natural progression of the way in which we're going. That's just part of a county growing up. I witnessed it in the past. It's some, someplace where we'll probably end up and we need to, need to educate ourselves about it and educate the public about it and educate other elected officials about it. Because it's the stormwater collection that you're talking about, which would be part of maybe flood control districts and other avenues. That's what you're speaking of, I believe. And we just need to start, there, there's a lot of good examples out there of people that have come before us in different counties and different states that helped guide us in this area. But moving into that type of, of planning and implementation with some sort of enforcement or taxing authority eventually in the future with everybody's cooperation is something we need to consider.
Other comments, please?
Well, Gary, I, I agree with you that, you know, any kind of recharge, stormwater is a great, great way to recharge. It's just, you know, where, where's the money coming from? How do we get that funding is, is the big issue. And it's going to have to be state or feds. You know, coming up with that money and, and, and we have to convince them that this is a priority for us, you know, here regionally. You know, to get that done.
Well, we have to start with constituent buy-in really of any kind of additional bureaucracy. We have to definitely really take a close examination of how we're going to allocate our resources. Really take a close examination of how we're going to allocate our resources, financial and natural.
So here's a question about the state legislature. It says, given the legislature's response during this year regarding water issues. I think we can characterize that response as. Nonproductive. What suggestions or strategies can you offer? To enhance their knowledge and appreciation for the water issues through the rural areas? Or simplified? How do we get them? To give rural areas the authorities that they need to manage their water?
Well, that certainly is extremely difficult, given the response that we've had so far. But that's when, you know, personal relationships and being a people person comes into effect. Part of the job of a board of supervisors to be down there lobbying. I most certainly would be down there more. With our legislators lobbying others to understand our position and to understand the. The so they understand the importance of Yavapai County and bringing people here where there's tourism or other venues they may want to be here for. It's educating our legislators.
We're going to try and do that some in October, so yes. More responses, any?
Yeah, I I have that event on my calendar already as well, but. Yeah, I mean, people person, I'm not a politician, but. I am. I would take take an analytical approach and and I certainly will be there. I mean, we have great legislators from this area right now, so. I have no problem with collaborating with them as well as the regis, the the rest of the legislature there, so. And that's one way of getting involved and getting their buy-in and and maybe having some carrots. Some some events here or something like that that might make it more attractive to them to pay attention to what our needs are here. That for them, there a lot of those people in the legislature, they're they're politicians, so we're we're going to have to find the the right approach.
Well, I think the county's does a good job of lobbying and working with the state. They certainly are doing that now and. It's always tough, Gary, you know this, you're up against the state of Maricopa. Down there, and it's, you know. Trying to figure. Yeah, trying to figure out how we attract attention out here to rural is is always going to be a struggle.
In particular, there's two legislators that have blocked. Consideration of some really good water bills in the legislature. Representative Griffin and Senator Kerr. So. Those have just been roadblocks. And really worthy, there were some good bills introduced this last session, but they didn't even get a committee hearing, so of course they don't advance to a vote. And. I I think Big Ag from Central and Southern Arizona had. Outsize influence with these two legislators. Northern Arizona just did not cut it, and so. I know that the existing board has. Supported rural management areas in the past. But again, it just got roadblocked. And how you get through those roadblocks is a good question. I wish you had a magic answer. All right, so here's another question about, I think this has to do with adequate water supply regulation. By unanimous vote, the board of supervisors can make. Water availability a determining factor in subdivision approval. Will you make such a vote to happen and how would you vote? So the supervisors did vote on adopting the adequate water supply rule. I think just after we went from three to five supervisors and they unanimously decided not to do it. The adequate water supply rule. Requires a hundred year water supply for subdivisions outside of an AMA. City of Carkdale has adopted this, Yuma County and Cochise County have, I think Cochise County has adopted this. But not Yavapai County, so. Would you make such a vote happen and how would you vote? What do you think about the adequate supply rule?
Well, the adequate supply rule is what is happening in our largest city. It just makes sense as a natural progression for conservation to do the same thing in the county. And. You have to have water for, go ahead.
In the AMAs, the.
Yes.
The corollary is called the assured water supply rule. Outside of the AMA, it's adequate.
Yes. Would I make such a vote? The answer is yes.
My answer would be most likely, yeah.
This is really a consumer protection rule. It wouldn't really protect the river very much. Because of the way the rule is written. It's more of a consumer protection effort.
Well, that's where my most likely hedging is. I mean, I'd want to take a look at the the rule itself. I I just, I'm not gonna. I I have to take a look. I have to. Study things carefully before I just. And like you said, made wave a magic wand, I mean. But. There may be restrictions that will need to apply at some point. On future development, so I mean.
Well, it it would be nice to give those folks that are moving here the understanding of whether they're buying a lemon or not.
Exactly. I mean, kind of like the the airport thing, right? So. Yeah, I mean, people need to know, there needs to be proper disclosure, that's for sure. And and that and without that kind of disclosure, that just would be. Unconscionable.
Talking with some realtors. And others, the impression is is that. Developers will often just ask for the adequate water supply. They don't, they'll ask ADWR for a letter saying they do not have an adequate water supply. They'll tell the first buyer of the property that, and people don't care. Go figure.
Right, well, I mean, that's that's the caveat caveat emptor, right? I mean, the uneducated buyer, I guess, I mean, or that the deliberately ignorant buyer. I mean, maybe they're not planning on a quick sale, so there's ways to to tie that, I guess, and you know, they'll have to. Understand that the economic disincentives perhaps that might be imposed if. These disclosures aren't perpetuated.
These are tough issues. Mr. Minger Alley, do you have a comment?
So the the question back. Was.
Would you support the adequate supply rule? And how would you vote?
Is it enforceable? Can the county enforce it? Do we have the authority to enforce it?
ADWR would be responsible for enforcement.
So, you know, I can support it, but ADDVR is going to have to, you know, ensure that it's enforced.
Right. Okay, another question is, has there been any thought to monitoring monitoring water well usage? You know, the legislature had a proposal that didn't get a hearing. That said that any well that pumped over ten acre feet per year outside of the AMA had to report their volume. And that didn't even get a hearing again because big agriculture opposed that idea. There have been other suggestions that. Domestic wells get monitored. That. Generate a firestorm of opposition. So, yeah, there has been thought to monitoring water well usage, but the fact is, is that ADWR doesn't really know how much groundwater is pumped outside of AMAs. That's eighty seven percent of the state. So let me just kind of rephrase the question. Do you think that wells outside of AMA should? Report their pumping volume?
I'd have to be convinced of what what what's the what's the positive impact of that? I mean, because it's a pretty severe. Application.
Well, you can't manage what you can't measure.
Yeah, but so if you're going to measure it, then then what?
That's what everybody's concerned about.
Exactly. So, yeah.
Yeah. You can't control what you're not controlling. You can't measure what you're not measuring. It's all the same thing that we're talking about here. It's the third rail up here politically. We all understand that. But when it comes to comprehensive planning, at least we can get a general idea of what's happening. And then move forward from there.
Yeah, the state proposal was to measure irrigation wells, not domestic wells, just to be clear.
Is the question about monitoring all wells or?
Well, which ones do you would you? Could you agree to monitor? Big ones, little ones, all of them?
Yeah, slipper slippery slope there.
Winners and losers.
Well, you start down this path, and then where does it lead? I I'll just be really honest, I want to protect those people out there that have a well and their private property rights and their well rights. That they have with ADWR, and so. You know, I'm sure there would be concern in rural Yavapai County about what the government's up to. They're going to be suspicious. And I'd be concerned about, you know, what's next. I understand it'd be nice data to have. There's no doubt about it. It 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 really coloring the picture for us much better. I just get concerned about. The government and where it's headed. Well, another consideration obviously is maybe future developments. I mean, what we don't want is. Hedge funds or other countries like what happened with the Chinese mine. We don't want somebody coming in, buying a whole bunch of property. And strip mining all the water underneath that property. So most certainly for maybe new developments, you know, we don't want to see fields and fields and fields of alfalfa. It's not something that we need, and new developments or new property ownership is something we certainly could look at in reference to what we're talking about.
Okay, so here's kind of an announcement on August ten. Seawag's public program will be on advanced water purification, also known as direct potable reuse. The questioner says, I'm hoping Prescott Prescott Valley and Chino Valley could cooperate on a regional. Advanced water purification plant. This basically takes wastewater and turns it into potable water. Maybe nearby areas in the county could also participate. What's your reaction to this idea? Is this helpful or? Questions about it or opinions?
Well, anytime there's regional cooperation, I'm for it. And if it's something that's positive with communities getting behind, it's what we need to do. Any way that we can purify or make potable water or any way we can move forward cooperatively together and regionally is. We definitely need to be doing it, and I would support it.
I mean. It's kind of a. Non-issue, really. I mean, of course, I mean, the more education, the better. People need to be better informed and and understand and. And 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 learn of of new and better solutions to the availability of of clean water. And potable water, yeah.
This really, this really only works for homes that are on wastewater collection system and sewer system. Doesn't really help rural counties.
Yeah, that's what I was. Going to say is unfortunately, we don't have those waste plants out in the county like, you know, you do on a municipality, so.
Right.
That's why I was for annexing development adjacent to the city of Prescott, because. We all know that it's the best way to preserve the aquifer is to be on a city. Municipal water system and then collect that wastewater with some stringent. Conservation measures that you can do within the city of Prescott. In this case, to ensure there's. Limited landscape water used and then recharging the aquifer with that wastewater.
That's an interesting point. And we've thought about that. So. When development happens in unincorporated county. On a planned area development. There's an opportunity to do a package wastewater treatment. Do a higher density lot. On on and have a little sewer system and a and a package plant that could recharge wastewater. But. If that development was in the county, if it was next to the city. Would the county? Cooperate with the city to get that land annexed and into the city's. Water wastewater system, which is probably more efficient than a small package plan. That would be a good strategy for the viewpoint of water savings.
Yeah.
It actually just happened with this Lake Shore six fifty. Development in the east side of Prescott Valley. They were going to go to the county. And they wound up going with the city. I don't know what role the county had in that, but should the county advocate those kinds of? Annexations?
I think it would be on a case by case basis, in my my opinion. I mean, I'd want, I'd need more, I'd need adequate information. To make that to make that decision. So and I think it would be on a, I mean, every community is different, so.
Yeah, I I think it's up to the applicant and the owner, Gary, you know, they have to be in proximity decent to. The the city boundaries to be annexed. There's rules around that. Certainly, it's because the municipality already has the infrastructure in place. And has the the wastewater treatment. They have the recharge facility. So I think, you know, when you talk about development like this, it does belong where we already have the infrastructure where you can then. Better steward the water resource. You know, out in rural Yavapai County. I would not advocate for this kind of high density development. We don't have the infrastructure. Across the board beyond water to support those kind of developments. As a matter of fact, I would advocate that we change zoning. Where typically you have a two acre, I'd I'd like to see a higher zoning, whether it be ten or even higher. Like a thirty six acre zoning with one lot split, because then that. Ensures that there's not going to be higher use out in these rural areas. Now, I you can't force a landowner to do that, to change that zoning. But I certainly would like to make it available to landowners to change that zoning for their legacy ranch or large. Land holding so that we're insured that there wouldn't be higher density out in those areas.
Like a restrictive covenant type of thing? That would run with the land?
Well, a zoning change. I'd like to see a zoning change from two acre to thirty six with one lot split, therefore you know. Out in these rural parts of Yavapai County for, you know, generations to come, that you're not going to have that higher density out there. It'd be a zoning change. Rural preservation or rural preservation districts are certainly the way to go when it comes to upzoning. And going from two acres to twenty or thirty six or higher to preserve out in that area. It's the different types of districts or this happens within cities. You can certainly do it out in rural areas. Just think rural preservation district. Versus historic district downtown. There's a lot of advantages to that. There's a lot of tax advantages for property taxes out there as well. When it comes to the the topic at hand, if all parties are agreed, I certainly would be advocating for it. But we don't want to run into problems such as, you know, let's say Stringfield Ranch. Where the mistake was made that it didn't abut to the city. And so that we ran into problems there. It just needs to have proper planning and better planning and coordination and cooperation between cities and counties when we when we move forward with these ideas.
So the probably the best way to accomplish this, which is a great idea, is through. A conservation easements. And so Salt River Project and the Nature Conservancy. Have obtained grants from the National. NRCS, National Resource Conservation Districts. They have a twenty two million dollar kitty to purchase. Conservation easements in the Big Chino Valley, so. This is effectively. This is effectively upzoning. It would, those conservation districts would. Not permit subdivision on the affected lands, so it's a willing buyer, willing seller thing. If you tried to change zoning laws, you're gonna run run up against a firestorm of lawsuits from the Private Property Protection Act. And so. It's gotta be a voluntary, willing. Willing seller, willing buyer thing, but it's a great strategy that is. We were just talking to SRP about this the other day and they are really excited about it and are pursuing it, so.
Yeah, like like an easement, that's kind of like a basically, it's a covenant that you put into the deed. Then when they convey the property through a purchase or sale, that there's a agreement on both sides that it will be used in a certain way. Including zoning, you know, a. Yeah, a rural.
Right, the development rights are held by. A third party, a trusted third party like Central Arizona Land Trust or something like that, so. Yeah, this is a classic way of protecting properties and we're working on that. There's a lot of good things happening and I'm. I'm optimistic, I'm also concerned. And I think it's. The reactions that all you've all had to these ideas about regional planning, I think is reason for optimism. I think. In the coming. Years, we're gonna find some, we're gonna make some progress. So that's kind of the end of the questions and I'd like to give you each a minute for a concluding statement. And so. Who goes next? Mr. Compton?
Certainly. First, I'd like to thank obviously Seawag for putting on this. This forum and I'd like to thank everybody who has been online and listening and their thoughtful questions. It's important that we hear from from them. My campaign and myself have been talking about since day one for over a year now about regional cooperation, regional planning and regional management. Conservation, water usage, and I'm in tune with what the constituents of the area want and need. And also, when it comes to the vote, while I am just would be just one vote. On the board, I am certainly conscious that that vote would affect everybody countywide. And I would want to make myself, well, it's certainly a full-time job and only a full-time job plus. You can only have one job and it should be this job. And. I'd be happy to up it to seventy hours a week so I can meet people in all the different districts as well. But I, once again, I appreciate everybody for being here. I appreciate the other candidates for participating. And I look forward to seeing people out on the campaign trail and you can reach me at brookscompton.com and once again, thank you.
Mr. Mingarelli, your closing statement?
Gary, always good to be with you. Hopefully won't be so long again next time. Thanks to you and your team there for your efforts. Not just on this forum, but educating folks here in Yavapai County about important water issues around the county. You know, I I want to just say that water will always and needs to be. A topic around, you know, these kinds of conversations around. Politics and and candidates that were are seeking election to ensure that they're educated as well as understand the importance of water and so. Thanks for helping do that. You can get more information for my campaign at mingarelliforaz.com. And would love to have more conversation. If folks have more questions, happy to to pick up the phone and and have conversations. So thanks again, Gary.
Okay, good. This is Pernice.
Thank you. I too want to thank Seagag and all of the. People that have joined this Zoom call today for the for their involvement. And I think it's it's key to educate the community and. I mean, most of us people in this, our age backward, which is like fifty-five over in this this area. Began our our awareness of. The the value and also the positivity of our natural resources. As as youngsters in school and I think that the key is to educating people. So, as as I've already mentioned, I think there's been a lot of thoughtful examination of all of these issues. My involvement as in quote-unquote politics was started when I first moved here and I was drafted to kind of assist our. Our local Prescott Lakes, friends of Prescott Lakes Group to. Revive, review the kind of development that that we've. Kind of cast a shadow on. Exhausting unnecessarily the water resources here in the name of. High-density development and. We need, we need more careful planning, I agree, collaborative planning, regional planning, collaboration with our state legislature and and so forth. That's what the only reason I'm running for this office. I never would have considered running for office, but for my becoming aware of these issues. Here in this idyllic place that I was drawn to and most of us. Were were drawn to and want to keep it that way. You can reach me at debpernice4d1.com. Feel free to contact me at any time. And yes, this is definitely a full-time job. One that I've I've had before in a in a different area. But. A full-time job means not just thirty or forty hours a week, which is what I've been doing as a volunteer for the local political party here. But a rather. Probably more like fifty or sixty hours a week. Thank you very much, everyone, for your involvement and listening. Thank you.
Okay, great, so. One final announcement, tomorrow afternoon, Seawag is having a meet and greet, so just some. Tea and. And ice water and. Light hors d'oeuvres at the Granite Creek Park Ramada, one one o'clock PM to three thirty on Sunday. And so the Seawag Board will be there. We've invited all the supervisor candidates if you can attend and. It's an opportunity to chat with people some more. That would be great. Seawag members, please come. And we can all continue our conversation on how to improve the water situation here. In our area, so with that, this is just, I think, is a very successful conversation. I'm I'm really pleased that there was some time at the end where we could have a less formal, less structured comments. I think that was. That's good, so. With that, let's bring this discussion to an end. Thank you all for attending and this will be on Seawag's website in a couple of hours, so you can watch it again. Thanks again. And goodbye.